Welcome to the May 21st edition of the Clinton School Committee. I'd like to start with the motion to approve the bills.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor. And can we have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 14th, 2018?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And to second?
I'll second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the minutes of May 14th? There being none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Thank you, unanimous. Do we have any, we do not have a student representative here tonight. Do we have anyone from the PTA?
That's right, I'm probably the same height, so.
Thanks.
Oh geez, thank you.
Hello. This week, we have our May meeting on May 24th, Thursday evening, at the Clinton Middle School, at 6:30. We will be taking nominations for next year's board. We're trying to build the board and have a parent, teacher, president, co-president, and kind of bring in more people. The voting will be at the June 14th meeting at the Clinton Middle School at 6:30. And hopefully, we'll have a large board and lots of people to join us. We're helping out at the next track meet at the athletic field, June 2nd, and we are looking for volunteers to come and work the concession stands. I realize that's graduation, so we're trying to get a nice flow, a couple hours here and there, just even an hour of time, it's great. Our trivia night is scheduled for June 16th. I originally said June 9th, but we're going with the 16th, and I should have tickets and posters by next week. If anyone's interested, they're $15 a ticket, and you can contact myself, Kate Moran, or really anyone, and they'll find us. It should be a fun night, it's a Hollywood glam, old-school Hollywood, so that'll be fun. And it's a nice way to end the school year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have someone from our special needs pack?
Hi Kelly.
Hi Kelly.
Good evening. We are pleased to announce that we have selected our first scholarship award recipient for our Sean P. Hazel Award, Memorial Award, and we are extremely delighted in the selection of our student, and we are looking forward to seeing graduation for that. We have our next meeting Wednesday, June 6th. We will be having Mr. Dr. Meyer at our meeting to help discuss about the changes in our special ed in our school district, and we're looking forward to that. We'll try to get as many people as we can to the meeting. And we will be, we don't meet in July, but we meet as a council without Kathy Buchanan at our meeting in August, and we just kind of plot out the coming school year for, we're looking at, we've been actively raising money for our scholarship, and now we want to switch gears a little bit and put some money, some effort into maybe getting some guest speakers in outside, we'll look in district, but then we want to look for something out of district. I've been to quite a few workshops in the area, and as far as grafting and stuff like that, and we'd like to see if maybe we could get something in here that would be not just geared to special ed students, but to the broader student, like executive functioning, anxiety, or something like that, where it would, it would help our special ed students, but it would also help our regular ed kids, too. So that's what we're looking for, for the upcoming school year after June.
Wonderful. Thank you for all your good work.
Thanks. It's a pleasure, thank you.
Do we have anything from the CTA tonight?
Nothing.
Is there any public comment tonight? As always, we can revisit that if we need to. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I think we might have, well, it's fine. The first thing on our superintendent report is recognitions, so we can start with our Students of the Month. We'll start with our Elementary Student of the Month.
And I will say to everyone here for those recognitions, we are thrilled that you're here. You are the reason that we do what we do, to support everything that you do so well in our school district. And we'd love for you to stay for the entire business meeting, but we will not be offended if after those recognitions you choose to leave.
As usual, thank you very much for having us here this evening. Tonight, we are very lucky, the Silvio and I are going to speak about a young man in the second grade who is here being honored for his academic achievement. Bilal Tate is a second grade student, is being honored here, as I said, based upon his academic growth. Bilal's homeroom teacher is Heidi Segalhorst, and Bilal has been with the CES for several years. Bilal has worked with Janine Ngano during the wind block for over six weeks in the fall. His DIBIL score, which is a one-minute oral reading, went from 33 words a minute to, in the fall, to 103 words a minute in math, an increase of 70 words per minute. His mother states to me now he's much more confident in his reading, and he reads on a continuous manner. For that, the Silvio and I would like to recognize Bilal Tate as our Student of the Month from CES.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You can go back to.
I totally could have his picture taken later, so I think he's a.
Okay.
Next, we'll move on to our Middle School Student of the Month.
Hello, everyone. We'd like to thank everybody for being here, too. This is a special night. As I stated, it's the Student of the Month for our school, and it's with great pleasure that we recognize a sixth grade student, Jomari Camacho, who has come highly recommended as Student of the Month for the Clinton Middle School. Since she has entered the Clinton Middle School, she has been an asset to her fellow classmates as well as her teachers. She is an outstanding role model for the ESL students as well as English speakers. She showers her classmates with kindness, and she has been instrumental in the development of her ESL classmates with her assistance. She's helped them feel more comfortable in class, and during wind block, she has taken it upon herself to do like a little study group in the back of the room to help them with their math. All the while doing this, she is a top student working hard academically. Jomari has grown over the years and come out of her shell in a very positive way. She follows the rules, she's kind to her classmates, and has pride in her work. She always has a greeting for everyone as she enters the classroom in the morning, as well as wishing them a happy afternoon in the afternoon. Jomari goes above and beyond what is expected of her. The Clinton Middle School is very proud of Jomari and her accomplishments, and sees great things happen for her in the future.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Jomari.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, and now moving on to the high school, I think we have two students, since we had a, I think we have a makeup from April.
I skipped a meeting and I pay him for it for a couple months. First student is going to be presented to you as a board, other parents present here. My first power music teacher.
Our Student of the Month for May is Nilda De Leon. I'd like to introduce you to her, over there. A Clinton High School student.
Lady behind the camera.
Nilda is a junior. She may, she may be a very familiar face, since she frequently sets up all the cameras and microphones and records school committee meetings. Nilda has set herself above and beyond her classmates because she embodies the qualities of responsibility, integrity, creativity, and citizenship. Nilda sets herself a rigorous course of study each year and works hard to maintain her place on the honor roll. She is the recipient of this year's Holy Cross Book Prize. She is a member of the Step Up Program, which, as you may know, is a program designed to identify students with great potential, and participates in their many opportunities to do community service, including Heifer Farm and Camp Sunshine. In addition, she has participated in drama club playing Oberon in this year's production of Shakespeare's Midsummer Night's Dream, and the cross-country team. Some may call me biased, because I am Nilda's mentor in the Step Up Program, so I decided to ask Nilda's teachers to briefly describe her. According to Ms. Robbins, your phys ed teacher, she described Nilda as a student who is always positive and willing to try her hardest. She was friendly with everyone and helped encourage a light and positive atmosphere for the class. Mr. Morrison, from Digital Media, describing Nilda as dependable. Nilda has been the go-to person for filming school committee for the past two years. All I need to do is ask. I never have any worries about her setting up, capturing the event, editing, and providing the video to the public. She is able to overcome any situation that arises during the process without any guidance from me. And he also said creative. Nilda has a very creative eye for graphics and video. She has the ability to envision a story, then stage and record the needed video. She is also an exceptional artist on various computer-based design programs. No, no big surprise, because she's thinking of a career in animation. Mr. Schirrmack, her science teacher, describes Nilda as a great student who works hard and accomplishes what she sets out to do. And finally, Ms. Welch, business and junior class advisor, describes Nilda as an active member of the CHS class of 2019. She jumps in to help out with Spirit Week, decorating for homecoming and prom, and whenever and wherever needed. When decorating for the prom last week, Nilda was a positive force in the group. She has an innate ability to make others feel special. In her role as Nilda's teacher, she says that she is an intelligent, hard-working young woman who has a talent of expressing herself succinctly and accurately in the classroom. She often takes the lead in group activities and collaboratively works with her peers to achieve success. She is a true leader and inspiration to others. And so, everyone can see that I'm not the only one of many teachers who think that Nilda De Leon is a remarkable student. I look forward to watching her strive toward and accomplish her dreams.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
So the month of April, very happy to present, to recognize our Student of the Month for that month, Kim Cleo.
William is currently finishing his freshman year at Clinton High School. As my nomination proceeds, Student of the Month award for April. William is hardworking and a conscientious student, who is a role model for his peers and always a bunch of happy class. Though William is quiet, his intelligence still shines through. I look forward to him. I look forward to him continuing to find his voice as he progresses through high school, sharing his beautiful thoughts with the world. William has many close friends in his classes, who have studied with him during his school journey. When doing group work in class, he is always willing to take on a leadership role. William's soft-spoken nature and palpable kindness helps motivate and encourage those around him. Another asset of William's is that he never speaks an ill word about or towards anyone. I look forward to William blossoming over the next three years, his destiny to great things in this world.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, moving on to our Staff Member of the Month. Thank you, ladies. Our CHS Employee of the Month, this month, and very honored, happy, proud to present to you for this recognition, Ellen Welsh. Ms. Ellen Welsh, since we stole her from Pittsburgh High School a few years ago, Ellen, could you please come up? She has taken on a great deal of responsibilities here at Clinton High School. She revised much of the CHS business department, which had a great history, has always had a great history, and as business law, for instance, or small businesses develop in time, so now as her curriculum. She reintroduced two of the CHS curriculum, accounting, which had been popular in the years gone by, but now with a new sense of technology tied into the curriculum. She was also able to take that accounting and supplement it with an accounting II class. She also complemented a Clinton High School original program, Senior Project, which Mr. Ngano introduced many years ago, and complemented this year with a lot of coverage to the telegram on a monthly basis, which was great for our marketing of Clinton High School. She's the moderator coordinator for our VHS classes, which is distant learning for 25 students for each semester. Also, she is the star of our community reality fair that we have each year here at Clinton High School. An incredible event, where many members of the community come and help organize this, and they take part with our students in budgeting, buying, and selling, mortgages, and houses, and all different aspects of the responsibilities the students will find in their future lives. And also, has taken upon to invite other schools to this from neighboring towns. She's established, and this is very, very important, recently established an articulation in accounting, an articulation agreement with both with Sigma Community College and Ma'au Wautu City Community College, the students in a program will be receiving credit on the college level while being in her class here at Clinton High School. She is, as just mentioned, the class advisor for the class of 2019, and just over a week ago, organized a fantastic, fun, and safe prom. She has been a step-up mentor, and she has taken a leading role also in our annual open house, which we have been hosting for the middle school students, and she has taken on all different responsibilities in coordinating it and helping me remember what we did the year before. Every event that happens at Clinton High School, she is involved in, printing programs, putting ideas together, and organizing. All of this, she does on a daily basis, and you know what? She's always smiling. What a great gift, and we are so appreciative of her.
Thank you.
Very well deserved. Congratulations. us, we will not in the least be offended. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you for those of you that came to support our students and employee of the month.
Prom always seems to thin out this one.
We should have offered our honorees the opportunity to take a photo with Mr. Bailey in his.
I'm glad they're all leaving. So if we continue with the superintendent's report, in your packet, you have the FY19 final budget, so this is basically just, you know, I presented a list of changes at the last meeting, and we had discussed sort of how we wanted to, made a couple decisions. So what you have here is basically, the first page is a summary of accounts listed as the town accounts, so those are the way that the town tracks the funds, so we have to take our DESE accounts and sort of regroup them for the town, so Karen was able to do that. Then you see sort of the summary sheet that we've kind of been showing all along. On the next page, it shows the 3% increase projected from the town, with the total operating expenditures of 3.15. The additional increase coming through, basically an increase in school choice, and the warrant technology and warrant articles. And then we have the following pages are the line items to reflect, it's showing the FY18, FY19, and the differences, and just a line item budget. So if we're comfortable with this revised budget, I think is the one that is supported by the finance, you know, it's based on the numbers that the finance committees indicated they're willing to support, we could, you know, maybe have a motion to support this budget. And then what I will do is, if that's a desire of the committee, then I will, I'll go through and update sort of that budget book that we had been working off of, so that that's available. We'll get that online prior to the town meeting, and maybe have some copies available at the night of town meeting, in case people are interested in that. So, but I won't, I'll do that revision, you know, if we're comfortable with this, I'll make all the revisions and changes to reflect these numbers, and update any other changes.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the revised budget.
I'll make a motion to accept the revised budget.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion on the budget as presented by Dr. Meyer?
Yeah, and I know we, you're probably tired hearing it, but I still, and I, it's tomorrow's the public hearing, is that correct? Is it tomorrow, 7 o'clock, right?
That's for the town.
Right, and what we're talking, what I was going to talk about, you know, I'm going to bring it up there, because I haven't seen the other one, as far as facility stuff.
I did, I did email Mike Ward about that, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to connect with him, no follow-up, but I did.
Yeah, and I'm sure they'll, I mean, they'll have the whole thing tomorrow, but if we're the only warrant article addressing facilities, then it's, you know, it's a wash, all right? But if we're not, I'm still, you know, not comfortable with us, you know, the school, I shouldn't say us, that's wrong wording, but with the, with the school being saddled with, you know, the, you know, that bill, I guess, is when it should be the facilities director scooping it all up, so, I mean, everything else, I have no problem with, I just, I don't know, I just, it just doesn't sit with me, I know what you mean.
All right, I can try to follow up with Mike tomorrow before their public hearing, and just see, see what else is on.
Yeah, and I plan on going to that, I mean, and if, again, if there's no other warrant, if we're the only one with the facilities, then it doesn't really matter who, it just, you know, it's grouped up under the school, that's the issue, that's my only concern.
Anything else? There being no further discussion, all those in favor of accepting the budget as presented by Dr. Meyer? Any opposed?
Yeah, just on that, that's my only issue, and if that comes out, then.
No extensions?
Yeah.
Motion passed?
But the rest of the other line items, you're fine with all that?
Absolutely, yeah. That was the only, we'll find that out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel, appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, so then, sort of a sub-bullet under that, we had the part-time director of athletics job description, so we had talked about trying to fund this in more of a enhanced kind of role than it is currently, and also trying to look at a different, the specifics of that position. So basically, this job description is very similar to the one that was posted last year. I did make some changes to try to reflect some of the discussion that we had had. I don't know if anyone's, if everyone's had an opportunity to review it, you know, it's kind of funny, it's one of the, it's probably one of the most comprehensive job descriptions we have, but it's, you know, so I don't know if there's any specific comments or concerns on that right now.
I don't have any concern, the job description is great, there's a couple things that I know we discussed, and maybe it's not appropriate that it goes into the job description, but I know, like, two of the things we talked about was keeping an eye out for, like, new and emerging sports, so I don't know if that's, again, that might be, maybe it's not appropriate to be on the job description, maybe that's something that we could just communicate to the athletic director. And the only other thing I didn't see, correct me if I'm wrong, is, and again, another thing, I'm not sure if it should go on the job description, but it's the, we talked about trying, have the athletic director try to enforce or try to administer some type of like alignment between the different sports programs from like varsity, junior varsity.
That like continuity.
Seventh, eighth grade, yeah.
So like in middle school football teams, running the same offense as.
Exactly, like coaching philosophy, strategy, Xs and Os, you know, the things of that nature, and you know, and just, I, you know, leave it up to the discretion of the athletic director to the degree to which he does that, but I do think it's beneficial to a successful sports program that there is some sort of continuity going from, from level to level. And obviously, there'll be some tailoring, you know, there'll be, it'll be easier for the, for the younger, and then probably get more complicated as you go along, but.
You don't think, under the fourth bullet, under responsibilities?
I don't, but like, like I said again, if it's, I'm not, I'm just bringing up like a couple things that, that we had discussed, that I just, and I, trust me, I mean, this is, this thing is, it is a very comprehensive description, so I'm not, you know, I'm not going to, you know, bucket it at all, there, I just, just bringing it up, I mean, to the, you know, the pleasure of the committee, if we, if we feel that, you know, those, those two things aren't, don't warrant being added in here.
Well, I think, I think I tried to capture in the new and emerging sports in the third bullet, where it sort of says works with principles of coaches to recruit current CPS students to participate in athletics. I think in my mind, part of that was, if there's an interest, then you're going to need to kind of.
Okay.
Get them to be part of that. And that the program alignment, I don't know if we specifically put that in there, it might be something I could maybe work in under somewhere as sort of just an example of one of those or something.
I just think, if anything, all of those bullets, and their specificity to them, but essentially, they fall under organizing and administering the overall athletic programs for the high school and middle schools.
Pretty much, yeah.
I would say that's, you know, pretty comprehensive in its scope. Mike?
A quick question, are there qualifications, is there now an athletic director's license?
I don't know if DESE has an official license for it, I know there is sort of like a certified athletic administrator.
I thought in the last year or two, they did establish a license requirement.
Okay.
Can you look into that, if that is the case, can we add that if it's not?
Yeah, so if they have one, I can put that it's at least.
If there is no license requirement, leave it as it is, it just, I thought last year or two that I heard that they had.
I'll double-check that, I know they made some changes, licensure category changes recently, so.
And they might have not have finalized that, so it might not be up to date.
So if that is a DESE kind of requirement, I'll make sure we add it, if not, we'll.
Okay, thank you.
With the, I know that, I think the, somewhere in here, I don't know if it's actually in the budget, the line item, or I saw it on here, it's budget around 30 grand, right?
That's kind of what we, that's what we kind of allocated in the, in the budget.
So it's in, right, so with the current stipend is what, around seven, so.
Ballpark.
Do you see it as costing 23, or given the flexibility between, you know, the 30, you know, like, based on who you hire?
Yeah, I think we'd have the flexibility to kind of hire almost up to 38,000, and I think that what that could do.
Probably should have said that, I made that, you know.
No, but I think, you know, I think there's some flexibility with this, you know.
I'm not an agent, I'm not the agent.
It's part of why I tried not to put a specific like salary range on it, because I do think there's some, some flexibility depending on the, on the person's, you know, individual circumstances. And I even mentioned to, you know, it doesn't preclude, I feel like it almost doesn't even preclude an existing staff member from, from applying for it, if they wanted to, we could simply just sort of give them sort of two contracts where they're working as like, now they're going to have a reduced, like, you're a .6 teacher and a .4 AD, and you kind of work up two contracts, and then essentially, that money then would kind of almost go to backfill by maybe hiring like a part-time teacher if, if necessary, to fill those classes that they'd be relieved from. So I think there's, yeah, I think the idea is to try to get a little more money allocated so we can have a better investment in it, but to make it so that we can, you know, have some flexibility, too, with depending on the circumstances and the, as, you know, we'll see, we'll do the posting, and then we'll, we'll see what we get.
Thank you. So the, just a question about the AD license requirement, if, is that, we're going to look into that, that could possibly be like a requirement right now, moving forward, that everyone that?
I'll double-check, I'll double-check it, they might, I don't know if the DESE has established one or not, I can, I'll look into that, and so if it's something that they're kind of requiring, we could at least add it to the qualifications, even if we say preferred next to it or something like that, or, or able to secure that license, you know what I mean, that kind of thing? Because sometimes you can do that, like, on a posting, if they either have the license or are able to secure the license.
Right, I'm just trying to look out for the candidate pool, that's all. And if, I mean, obviously, it'd be great, but if, if we could get somebody that has the AD license requirement, but. requirement, but, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'll look into that tomorrow.
I'll make a motion that we approve the athletic director job description.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of accepting the job description? Thank you, unanimous.
All right. Facilities, just a couple little updates, lighting, you might have noticed if you got here early, they were working on some lights in here, and usually go through the hallways if you look up, some of the brighter fixtures have been replaced already with the LED lighting, and like, the parking lot lights have already been done, so there's, they're progressing with that. The only other facilities update I had really for tonight was the, the high school HVAC units, we're still working on, we had a plumbing company come in and has replaced the pressure relief valves on, on the boilers. Basically, the company said that those were, the typical lifespan for those valves is 10 to 15 years old, and those ones were original to the building, so they're almost 20. And the, we've got another engineering company coming in to look at our circulating pump as well as our expansion tanks, so we can make sure that we fix that, fix that system. Expansion tanks, we should be fine, as long as we get them fixed prior to needing the heat again. The circulation pump, we need to get fixed in order for the chiller to operate as well during the summer, so they're looking probably to rebuild that pump, and, and then there's a pump, there's another pump that might need to be replaced as well, that will, that company will look into it, so, just trying to, you know, I think we're just sort of at a point where, you know, the life of the building, it's about almost 20 years old, and some of these systems are, we just need to do some upgrades to them, so.
Any questions on facilities? The, the lighting, that's part of the updates of the program from the energy audit?
Yeah, that's the one we did, we approved that a few months ago, and, you know, so that's one where, you know, we paid a little bit upfront, and then the rest of it was kind of like financed on our billing and should be offset by the savings from the...
I think it's terrific, brings out the colors in Mr. Bailey's shirt.
I've had this, I bought this at 10 o'clock this morning. I can't wait for new business so I can address this.
Yeah, summer meeting schedule is the, the next one, so I guess our next scheduled meeting would be, would be June 11th, which I know is three weeks away, but we'll see each other plenty between now and then.
Indeed.
We have the, you know, Memorial Day Parade, which we did order a banner for, that should be here, we'll have the graduation, and we have a town meeting on the 4th. So then, the 11th would be our next meeting, that is the election night, so vote before you come. And then, on that meeting, we will do, we will invite all of our retirees this year, and we have some certificates to present them and recognition for their service, and also, the other main topic, would I be just trying to provide the committee with a year-end goals update on, on where we are with our district goals. We've looked at a couple other proposed dates, July 16th, that's not a normal date, that's kind of, again, just in the middle of the month, our normal date might have been the week before that, would have been like the 9th or something, but I know that's the week that I'll be at the Cape for the MAS superintendent's conference, so we're looking at July 16th, and then the 13th and 27th, I believe, would be our normal dates in, in August, and it also times out well, the 27th will kind of be that, that first day back again. So, I don't know if you guys are, are fine with setting, setting those dates, or if there's any questions or concerns on them?
What's the pleasure of the committee?
Fine with me.
I'll make a motion, we approve those dates.
Is there a second?
What, Simon Poulos, is it not, no, was it the 13th?
No, it's the 18th, so we're good.
No, I thought it was the 13th, I was gonna say.
Thank you, a motion being made and seconded, is there any other discussion?
I've had a lot, Dave.
None. Any discussion by anyone not wearing a Cleveland Cavaliers shirt? None. There being none, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
And we did do only one meeting in June there, if for some reason we have some unfinished business that we feel needs to be tended to, we could always look at scheduling a meeting at the June 11th meeting, but I'll try to, I'll try to wrap it up for everybody. I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I just want to start by saying that over the last couple of weeks, you know, we've had the opportunity to just see the, the products of all of the efforts of our community members and parents and students, and I wasn't able to attend the Step Up Awards, but, you know, I know what a, what a wonderful opportunity that is to just celebrate the efforts of, of students. I was able to attend the academic awards and the National Honor Society inductions, and, you know, there, there are moments when it is just so incredibly gratifying to be both a towns person and a, and a principal, and a school committee member, and a parent of a, of a child in the school district, and I'm just grateful to all of the people that come together to provide all of these opportunities for our students, and, and I'm just very grateful to have an opportunity to see that, so, wanted to mention that. We have the end-of-the-year superintendent evaluation to get to, and with our last meeting on...
Really, the 11th is the last one in this year, I'm sure if we needed to do it in July, we could probably fudge something, but it's...
So, so we did a lot of the legwork not, not too very long ago, but I guess what I would ask from the committee, our final thoughts and on Dr. Meyer's evaluation, and if you could get that to me, what's a reasonable timeline for folks?
Did it work for everyone with me, kind of providing, like, last time when I kind of provided sort of a draft of some ideas? Do you want me to maybe start, I can try to update that with some maybe end-of-year evidence, or cite some other things, and get that out to you guys maybe by the end of the week? We do have three, we do have three weeks between this meeting and next meeting.
Does that work?
So then, that would give you guys like that next week, maybe to get feedback to Joel, and then that leaves that last week to kind of compile it, and then we can just review it all in, in open session.
So, we should have our feedback to you within Tuesday, you have time to...
By June, by Monday, June 4th, maybe?
Yeah, that's like a week before the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine for me, yeah.
And I'll try to get, I'll try to get my stuff to you guys before this weekend, because if not, I'll get it over the weekend, but I'll get to...
Well, and, thank you, and that would be helpful, it's, you know, the initial evidence that you provided was pretty comprehensive, so just updates, I think is probably fine. Thank you. We'll get, get to work on that. Anything from the policy or marketing subcommittees?
It's a busy time of year.
It is, it is an exceptionally busy time of year. All right, I, I just, I guess I would just say again, just in terms of marketing, please come and visit the schools and see the tremendous things that are going on in, in all of our schools, our elementary, our middle, our high school, and, and all of the ancillary programs that support our students, it's a great time to be a Clinton Gale.
So, so we are marching in the Memorial Day Parade?
We are.
Okay.
We are.
And we have, you said, we have a banner?
Yeah, we have a little banner for you to carry.
So, we have to walk and carry a banner?
I was hoping to get a couple of students'...
This doesn't bode well.
Student volunteers to carry...
There, now we're talking, hey, now we're talking.
I, I'm only an assistant coach in Clinton area Little League.
I could use an extra help, just keeping them in there.
I don't know, what time do we have to be there for that?
So, I believe the...
I think you have to be up at Central Park by 9 o'clock.
Doesn't Brenny run it?
I think, I think the parade begins...
You really ought to roll tonight.
He doesn't, I'm sorry.
I think the ceremony begins at 9, at Central Park.
It does, ceremony starts at 9.
And then they try to get the parade started by 10.
Yeah, I think it's a little before 10. It's right after the ceremony, depending on how long.
We were rained out last year, so...
So, we'll all be up at the town hall, up at the park by, say, 8:45?
Okay, do we need to, are we part of the ceremony? No?
No, no, we just get lined up.
Do you want to speak apart?
Never turn, never turn away a mic, right?
Now we're talking, yeah.
Oh, that's an idea, a nice convertible for every principal.
Don't we just have to sit there?
Can you put all three principals in there?
This is the start of something we probably shouldn't keep talking about, so we'll end up on a float. Is there anything under old business? Anything under new business?
Yeah, you just got two things. First off, I want to thank Mr. Hastings and the, I had four students, two from last year's graduating class, Brandon Early and Jack McKevelly, and two from this year's graduating class, Tim Bernard and Aiden Flaherty, I think is his first name. They helped put out, along with retired police officer Jake Gohin, they helped put out just over 1,900 flags on all the graves between St. John's Woodlawn, and I always do Red Square Pines, because it's the smaller one, but they came last week, two of them on Friday, and two of them on, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, and did Woodlawn, knocked them all out, so, you know, I talked to Mr. Hastings a couple, I think it was the last, or two school committee meetings ago, and he got the students to come up, so I really appreciate the help, and we got them all out there. And on the second note, I don't mean any disrespect to Celtics fans, I lost a silly bet to a middle school student, and I took the Bruins, and he would have had to wear a Bruins shirt, well, the Bruins got knocked out, so he had Cleveland, and I said he would have to wear the Bruins shirt to school, I don't go to school, so he said, well, I would have to wear this, so I went and bought this today, I had to wear it to the school committee meeting, I'm taking it off as soon as the meeting's over, and I, to all of you, I do apologize.
And while the Clinton School Committee does not condone gaming in any way, we, we are happy to support Mr. Bailey and his support of a middle school student and engaging him and...
He's a middle school student to gamble, man, we gotta end this meeting.
Well, thank you, and thank you for sharing, for sharing that, and we look forward to seeing everyone on Memorial Day. That said, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, we stand adjourned.